All right, let's get started. Call to order, the regular meeting of the Simsbury Zoning Commission. In terms of appointment of alternates, Vaughn, you can sit in for Jerry Post. And everybody else is... Oh, Dave, if Ned comes, he can sit. So we'll just... We'll have everybody here be seated.
Here's Derek.
Here comes Derek. All right, approval of minutes. There are a couple of just edits to the minutes that I will give you. I think on line 67, it refers to green-lined, and I think it meant green-lighted, so... And then we would note on line 80 that with the exception of commissioners, Pearl Peterson and Pabich, who opposed the refund. Otherwise, I thought...
67?
Pardon me?
You said 67.
67, it should say "green-lighted," not "green-lined." All right. So next first item would be the consent items.
What am I reading? That was June 3rd. What did you write there?
Okay, we're moving right along.
Beginning of the summer.
For one, would like to keep going in the right direction. I do not want to go backwards.
Clean out that briefcase, everyone. All right.
Legal notice, town of Simsbury, zoning commission regular meeting. The zoning commission of the town of Simsbury will hold a public hearing at a regular meeting to be held on Monday, October 21st, 2013, at 7:00 PM. In the main meeting room at the Simsbury Town Offices, 933 Hopmetown Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, on the following. Proposed amendment to the Simsbury zoning regulations for marijuana, palliative use, dispensaries, and producers. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communication will be received. Edward J. Pabich, secretary, dated the 16th day of October 2013, at Simsbury, Connecticut.
Hi, Ram.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this is an item that we started some time ago to talk about when the legislature first passed the initial legislation. Subsequent to that, the legislature and the staff of legislature has put together the regulations for... that would apply to producers and to distributors of palliative marijuana. I think at the last meeting, we had some information given to us by a member of the public. What I think we probably need to do at this point in time is hear other members of the public, answer whatever questions you might have, and then decide where the commission wants to go at that particular point in time. The regulation that you do have is the same one we put together some time ago. The only thing I did was update the public act numbers with the statute numbers. I assume that there are some of the public here that want to talk about that this evening and answer whatever questions you might have. So, other than that, in terms of introduction, I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
So we actually opened this public hearing just over a year ago.
That's correct.
And there were... We had interesting discussion about it, but without a lot of facts about how the law would actually settle out. We now have these proposed regulations, so the regulations really limit our... Wait, I... Let me summarize it as I see them. There are definitions of two new activities, and then those activities are listed in the regulations as requiring special exemptions in order to be... To have... The zoning commission would have to grant the exemption so that that activity could be performed at this specific site. So on a site-by-site basis, people would have to bring in their applications to be approved, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. The dispensaries, for example, are... would be allowed by special exceptions in the B1, B2, and B3 zones, whereas the production facilities would be allowed in the I1, I2 zones. I3 is earth excavation, so it's not appropriate. But those are the only two areas. Whether there are people that are interested in dispensaries versus production facilities is something I expect we'll hear a little bit about this evening.
Right.
I know that at one time, just to clarify a question that came up a little bit earlier, at one time, the commission had said, "Well, we want to know where the police are on this particular issue." I did have a number of discussions with the chief, and he indicated that they really didn't have any particular items that they wanted to present for the public consumption. I think a lot of the questions that they may have had with regard to how this legislation would be enacted and how the regulations would sit probably revolved around security and security issues, and I haven't heard anything back from the police subsequent to the regulations coming out on their comments on that. So have no negative... And frankly, have no negative comments from the public, and not really many public comments at all so far.
I just want to make further clarification that absent a regulation change, this activity would not require a special exception necessarily. Right, correct?
That's correct. That's my understanding, unless we hear something different from either town attorney or somebody else. That's correct.
All right. All right, so we would be glad to open it to the public who wish to speak. Again, we would like anyone who wants to speak to this topic to limit it not to the pluses and minuses of the use of marijuana, but to the specific topic of the regulation change. So if you have comments about the language, we'd be glad to hear from you. Please. Please come use a microphone and state your name and where you live.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be back before this zoning commission. I'm Dwight Merri. I'm a lawyer with Robinson &amp; Cole in Hartford and a resident of Simsbury. Yes, M-E-R-R-I-A-M. Perhaps you have a Merriam-Webster collegiate dictionary. It makes a wonderful gift for family and friends. [laughter]
You worked pretty hard on it.
Yeah, I did. Got a lot of words in it. We're fortunate, Robinson &amp; Cole, to have been retained by a truly impressive group of highly regarded and successful people who have engaged us to assist them in making an application to be producers of medical marijuana. Although the planning for this has been underway for quite a long time in preparing the application, we are at a critical final stage in the formation of the corporate entities and the registration of trade names and other protections for intellectual property. It's a big, complex undertaking to make an application pursuant to those regulations. As you may know, all of this work, including local zoning, to allow production, has to be in place by November 15th. That's the deadline for the applications. I want to tell you a little more. You've seen one of the people involved a couple of weeks ago, and I'm going to explain in really a short statement here about where we are and what we would like to have in order to go forward. The person who's largely responsible for pulling this team together is a gentleman named Robert Bernbaum of Greenwich, and he will be the chief financial officer and board chairman of the business entity to be a producer. And to make that application for one of only three that will be approved in the entire state. And two other members of his executive team, the company's executive team, are April Arosati of Canton, who's the chief operating officer. And she would be here, except she's running a meeting on another matter in Canton as we speak. And Eileen Coniesse, who is CEO, chief operating officer, is here. The thing that's really remarkable, besides the adoption of the regulations and following the statute, and really was very important in what's happened since, is Eric Holder, the Attorney General of the United States, on August 29th, announced that the Department of Justice will apply what some people have labeled a "trust-but-verify" approach to the implementation of medical marijuana programs in 20 states and the District of Columbia. That action by the U.S. Attorney General, and as your planner might relate to you, I've written on this sort of as an academic more than anything over the last three years for the International Municipal Lawyers Association, for the Connecticut Bar Association, and I'm fortunate to have a contract with the American Bar Association to write a book, which I am, on medical marijuana with Professor Jack Minin of San Diego, because I think it's a terribly interesting public policy issue, a medical rights issue. This medication is needed by many people, and we really at Connecticut are, I can tell you, knowing the laws of all 20 states, having reviewed them, plus the district, we are so far out ahead of the other states in the country. But kind of a roadblock was this issue of what the Department of Justice was going to do. Now, Eric Holder has made it clear and issued through his staff a memo on August 29th that he was going to stand back and allow the states to do what the states do best, just as we've done here in Connecticut, and that is to develop its own statutory and regulatory scheme to oversee, to make sure that only the highest quality medications produced in this process, and that only the most qualified potential applicants, those that have the business experience, those that have adequate financial backing, those that have the right team, the right plan, that those are the people who are going to be the producers, and those are the people who are going to get the limited number dispensers license. So now, finally, since August 29th, and that brings this team to Simsbury and to my law firm to retain us, we now have highly experienced, sophisticated, and well-financed entrepreneurs such as this team led by Robert Bernbaum and the two other principals. They can now enter the market, and they can compete with the others who came before them, before the U.S. Attorney General announced his plan. This team has an alternative location to Simsbury, but would greatly prefer to be here. To do that, we need to get resolved this question about what the regulation is going to be or not going to be. And to facilitate that, we would hope that this commission can bring closure to this hearing and to make a vote so that we can finish the process of making an application because we have to include as part of that where the producer facility is going to be. We can go here, we can go to another town, much rather be here. And as I said, this happens to be the town where I live, where my son just graduated from high school, and my daughter's a high school freshman, and we just think this is the best place ever because we've got a terrific potential site that meets the terms of this proposed amendment to the regulations. So our sole purpose in being here is nothing more than to ask you to do what you need to do, to close the hearing, get a vote, and let us know whether we should include Simsbury in our application or go elsewhere. Now, if I can answer any questions, I'd be pleased to do that.
At what point would you be willing to tell us what your location is?
I think at this... It will have to be after we make the application. I mean, it'll be in the application. It's very interesting. I think the last time we checked on the website, nobody has submitted an application, right? And everybody's going to wait till November 15th. They're going to be in the parking lot with their hats pulled down low over their face, trying not to... We don't know who the other... We don't know who the other applicants are. We got a hint of a few of who they may be, but the applicants don't want to submit early. The application has to include a statement that says you can get the zoning, the municipality has the zoning necessary to support this. We don't have to apply for the special exception, have it approved by November 15th.
Right.
We have to have a site secured. We have a site. It's in the industrial zone, and we're in the process of finishing the negotiations on the letter of intent, which is necessary for us to include in the application. So absolutely, November 15th, when the application's submitted, we'll be in a position at that time. Some of that item... Some of that material may stay proprietary for a period thereafter. We just don't know yet. I think they're looking at a March decision date or something like that. We hope earlier than that, but there's some speculation about when we'll know, and we may need for certain purposes to protect some of that information on a proprietary basis. One of the interesting things of the position we're in now, because we're registering all these names, we have several corporate names, and I can't tell you what one we're going to operate under until we get those registered because somebody else may grab them. So we can't reveal the site yet, but we will probably November 15th, but it may be a short time thereafter that we have to protect that site. Yes?
Could you tell us about the number of workers and the pay scale of the workers who work in this facility? And I know that may change over time. I heard about that last time, but I'm curious as to what we're talking about as far as the kinds of people who'd be working there.
I'm going to make a... Clarify an order. This is not a hearing on their application, Will, and it's not an invalid question, but we're really here to discuss the regulations themselves. So we're not going to have a hearing on the particular application. If you want to ask a general question to people, that's fine, but...
I think one of the things, I know you've been directed to the Department of Consumer Protection's website and regulations. If you haven't been there, it's really quite informative. Department of Consumer Protection, medical marijuana, if you just Google that, it'll take you there. But the regulations are in there. And one of the major items that a large number of points in this competitive process is given for has to do with the relationship of the business entity and its employees. The state wants to know that the employees are going to be addressed in the terms of their work conditions and benefits and so forth, and that's all in the application. Do you have any further comments on any of those issues?
It's not...
Well, you need to come up here because they were recording it. Introduce yourself, and then for the record, as we say...
Eileen, you got that? Cultivating medical cannabis isn't an easy thing to do, so we're not talking about a low level of pay. There's a lot of knowledge that has to go behind this, so I don't really know exactly how to address what you're asking, but there will be up to between a dozen to two dozen people that are employed right off the bat. I mean, we're... This is... When you think about everything that's involved in the cultivation of the plant and following the regulations and providing medicine the way we envision this, we're talking about a small-cap pharmaceutical company. I mean, we're not talking about... Right. We're talking about a small-cap pharmaceutical company. Research and development, education, advocacy.
And growing plants as well, though, correct?
Absolutely.
All doors.
In a secure location.
Site security is critical in the application.
Just quick, what exactly will the text of the amendment state?
You have a copy of it in your package.
I never got it, actually. Got a package.
Didn't get this? Those are the draft.
Okay.
So we're adding two definitions?
Definition for dispenser and producer. And that limits the zones in which you could...
Okay.
Makes them for the special exception.
In terms of adding this to our zoning regs, is there a chance... Is a likely chance that there'll be more than three applicants? And where I'm going is, is there's a chance that the application could be denied by the state?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it... I don't understand the question. Is there a chance of going to be more than three applicants applying for the three?
For the three spots.
Oh, yeah. It's going to be a very crowded parking lot on the 15th, I'll tell you. It's going to be very... It'll be a lot of fun to see who shows up, but I don't know.
Because we've only had one, you know, group come before us, and we're going to change our zoning regs, you know, kind of under the assumption that this is the group that will...
No, no. That's exactly the point I'm trying to make. I'm trying to very focus this on the fact that absent a change in the regulations...
Right.
A business could make an... Take out a lease in the industrial zone and claim that it was a permitted activity and not require a special exception.
Right.
So what we're doing is, not to put too fine a point on it, is we're putting in a process in our regulations that defines a new activity that has been recently approved by the state of Connecticut so that we can have a process to say that this activity needs a special exception. So absent anything, doing... If we did nothing, then this would not be defined activity and therefore wouldn't require any special treatment by the zoning commission. And so I want to focus entirely on that today, and it's not about Eileen, who gave a very informative and passionate presentation two weeks ago. This is not about Mr. Merriam and his group that he represents. This is about a change in the regulations, all right? As I understand the process, he needs to know that their town has regulations to deal with this activity so that he can make his application. If we don't do that, he may choose a different town. That's not the reason we're here tonight. This is really not about their application.
So can I just clarify then? So if we were not to make this regulation change, we would have less control rather than more.
Exactly.
I think that's all we really need to know.
That's pretty simple.
Yeah.
And some towns have found that it's allowed as of right under their existing zoning. It's an agricultural operation, allowed in certain zones, and they've done nothing. They've just said, you know, "You can go ahead and do it." Here, what's important, I think, in your proposal, which is helpful to all concerned, is you've got two definitions that you need. And in terms of subjecting applicants to special exception or special permit, which as you know, is a site-specific analysis of whether it fits on that site or not, that's perfectly fine with us because not only do we think we stand a good chance of getting selected because we have the top people that you can find anywhere to do this work, but we're ready, willing, and able to come back before you and have that conversation, that discussion, that open public dialogue because that's the right thing to do. So the problem that I've got to tell you that we have is if this hearing stays open and you're undecided, I don't think I can put Simsbury down as a town that's ready, willing, and able to allow it. So it's not a matter... We're not making a choice. I got to tell you that we're going to go... We have to go elsewhere because it's an essential part of our application. We don't have to have your permit and approval, but we do have to have the regulatory structure in place. That's why we need to close this hearing and fish or cut bait on this issue. That's all.
And just to put another fine point on Derek's point is that we... Just because someone else hasn't been here, it doesn't mean that they're not also targeting our town, so...
That's true.
If we do, it's no good to, in my view, not pass the regulation.
Mm-hmm.
All right?
No, I think it stands us in good stead, no matter who comes before us.
So just to keep this going, any other questions for this... All right, fine.
Thank you for your...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to speak to this topic?
I have a general question because I wasn't here for the last meeting, but dispensary versus producer, does the law encompass both?
Yes.
Okay. So either or.
And there are different rules and specifications. There are more dispensing licenses going to be issued ultimately than producing?
Yeah.
And I don't know the exact number, but it's five dispensing initially.
Initially, they said about three to ten.
Three to five. There's three qualifications.
All right. So I would be looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Sticking with our agenda, that doesn't mean we go by the agenda. We could have discussion and possible action on any agenda item. So we could discuss and vote on the regulation change.
Yeah, I would like to discuss it. I don't know that we discuss it.
All right.
The issue I have, I understand where we're coming from, and I understand we have to make a decision tonight. I just want to be sure that we don't preclude anything that's been recommended by the town attorney by virtue of taking an action. And specifically, I'm looking at two things. Maybe the first item has already been addressed, defining the locational limitations, but with a special exception, I think will be site-specific. But item B in his memo, the standards and conditions that will apply to any application for a zoning permit, do we... Are we vulnerable in not having that definition in a vote we take this evening?
I think the standards that would apply to any special exception application would have to apply to this as well in terms of being uniform across the board. So the location, traffic, all the things that you would typically look at under special exceptions would automatically apply to this because it's set as a special exception of the regulations. So all the standards that are currently in the regulations...
Those standards. But for example, I mean, for a liquor permit, there's some unique things that we consider, and I don't have a specific to recommend. I just want to be sure that we don't preclude ourselves... I mean, I'm looking for some flexibility in dealing with the applicant when he comes in and...
Well, there are fairly broad protections in there for public safety and welfare of the community and consistent with the surrounding use and all of those.
And if that... And if we interpret it that way as a public safety, maybe that addresses my issue.
And I just wanted to reiterate or just underscore my understanding, which is that this is going to be treated very much like any other pharmacy... pharmaceutical type of retail type of program or agency or business, and it's not going to have less protections and it may not necessarily have more. Is that the correct way of saying it?
I think the way that looking at the special exceptions, Amy, is that it would have adequate protections and considerations for all the things that would normally be considered under special exception. So it's not a farming operation per se where they're going to get out and harrow the ground, and there's going to be dusts fumed all over the place, that kind of thing. So those kinds of things would probably not be considered typically. But there also would be neighborhood character and all the things that go along with that. So I think you're exactly right. It would get the proper amount of consideration based upon the broad standards that are in a special exception application.
And that it is an indoor facility, not an outdoor facility.
And that's been made clear by everybody.
Right.
Yep.
So some of the specific questions, like the one that Will asked in terms of the nature and of the workforce, where it comes from, how it's going to get there, traffic, both who they are, how they're paid, things like security, ingress and egress, those are the kinds of things of the specific applications that we would be very focused on when we look at them.
And this allows us to do that by passing this.
Right.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question. Under G2 number five, maximum of four medical marijuana dispensary facilities. Why do we have four?
Actually, that was a number that I put in the original draft, well, just because I thought rather than limit it to one, the commission could decide, for example, if it wanted four. At this particular point in time, we've not heard from anybody that they have any interest in any dispensaries here in town. We're talking about, in this case, just a production facility. So frankly, it was a totally arbitrary number, to be honest with you. If the commission decided two was a better number, then so be it.
Would the application still be valid if we only agreed to the manufacturer versus the dispensary at this point?
Well, you run the same risk, is you would not be giving yourself the protection that the definition gives.
Yes.
And the requirement for a special exception.
I think interestingly enough, what the legislature did when they put the regulations together was they were very specific about where those places could be, who would be the registered dispensary person, pharmacist, and so on. So there are lots of specifics in those regulations which are referenced here in the legislation.
Okay. How do you feel about...
A general question, actually. Why this would not be... Right now, it's talking about specific... Different specific zones, and... Just take a look at the regulations for one second. Question is, why wouldn't it just be a part of 7A?
You're going to make...
Which is basically... Well, I have it right here. Just the idea of 7A is that this is a section that addresses special circumstances and characteristics, and each must be considered as an individual case, which is what we're talking about doing and wanting to do. So I just wondered why, but that would be for any zone, as I understand it. So is it... Would it be better to just be broader and say, "We're going to put this category into 7A as one of those things like cemeteries and aircraft landing fields that we want to have special public hearing for and have to have the proper considerations that we've been talking about?"
I think in terms of where it's located in the regulation, that would be fine, Will. Frankly, I hear they have it in more than one location, just so people are clear about it right now, just because it is new. I mean, we certainly can renumber it appropriately and insert it wherever you like. I think the text and the content, as long as that doesn't change, then obviously the hearing is not upset by that.
Because I just... Because we've had some different discussions about what possible zones this might fall into, whether it's an I-zone because it's manufacturing... zones this might fall into, whether it's an I-zone because it's manufacturing or whether it's agricultural, I just wondered if it would be, a broader way to look at this would be to put it into 7A, which seems to capture everything.
If I could raise a recommendation, then if you did decide to do it, what I would certainly do would run that by town attorney before we publish it, but perhaps both locations at this point in time, if it's not necessary.
All right, so down below, you're saying add Article 7J-B? You would say also put that in seven where?
Oh, I was saying 7A, I'm sorry, 7A, which is, you know, in permitted uses, it's the first section saying, the following list of things are declared to possess such special circumstances and characteristics that each must be considered as an individual case. So that's what we're talking about for this.
Right.
For such broad, it's, no matter what, if it falls on this list on 7A, we're going to have to have a special hearing and talk about it separately. Rather than what we've done here, which is to say, in these particular zones, we need to have a special hearing. So, because I do have some questions about whether it would be considered agricultural versus manufacturing versus industrial, all those have been talked about as possible places to do the growing of marijuana and production of marijuana. So I'm just looking for a way to make sure we cover, we're trying to cover, which is make sure that we always get to see whatever's proposed, not have to worry about whether someone comes in through a different avenue and says, well, this is actually agricultural, so.
So the same text, but located in two different places?
I would definitely put it in B as well, just to make sure that we get the special exception covered. I would add that just to make sure that fits.
And how do, do we want to discuss the four dispensaries versus two or three?
I don't like four. That's my own personal view.
Not that big a town?
No.
True.
That's my, yeah, part of the point.
If you went with two, you could change that down the road if there was an outpouring of interest. If you go to four, and you don't like that, it's going to be a little bit harder to go back.
I recommend we make that change as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right, so I'll make the motion and somebody else can second. All right, so I move that we adopt these zoning regulation changes. As discussed with the change, as just recently noted, just noted that we maximum of two medical marijuana dispensary facilities permitted within the town of Simsbury at any time. And that when we add article, add the language at the bottom of this insert, that we include it in two places, 7A as well as 7J.
Nice. Second motion.
And the other discussion?
Yes, on the definitions, it references Article 4, Section 4.2. I believe that should be Article 4, Section 4.2, I think it should be actually Article 4, Section 4B, which is the definition section, rather than see the terms. So I think it's actually just a typo.
That's why we have to have lawyers on the definition. Can you get that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So I'll amend, pardon me.
I'm here to catch that.
So I will amend my motion to make that correction. And I assume, Amy, your second still stands?
Still second.
So I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, so these regulations will be adopted. And we'll see how it goes, all right? Good luck on your application. Thank you for your interest in our town. Discussion of possible action on any agenda item, including application number 13-30 of Matt Whitmer, Phase Zero Design Agent for GPF Drake Hill LLC, 720, this has been deferred?
It has been continued until the next meeting, Chairman.
Correct. So, application number 13-48 of Jay Edwards Associates LLC, Agent for East Point LLC, owner for a site plan amendment and sign permit. That's new, right?
That's new.
Sign permit on the properly located Dorset Crossing Drive, Zone PAD.
Yeah, we'll talk about that. I didn't get it either. But I'll tell you.
That's all right.
Figured out you can always go back to the previous stuff, it's always there.
Yep. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Larry Edwards, I'm a professional engineer with offices at 227 Stepney Road in Easton. Basically, what we have before you is a final proposal for the PAD master zone, I guess is what you call it, in, for the Dorset Crossing project, including what is the housing sector, which was originally a 16-acre parcel, which is now being proposed to be divided into two parcels. We are the ones involved in what will be a 10.2-acre portion of that. The remainder of the site, which is on the far side of the, of the brook, will be divided off, and that will be developed at a later date. We are involved only in the development of this portion right here.
That actually already has been done.
Okay, has been, okay. So just. Okay, so it's gone from 16-plus acres to 10 acres. What we have basically proposed is a total of seven three-story buildings located in a loop development scheme. Each of those buildings will have a total of 24 units, for a total on the project of 168 units. That is in compliance with the proposed master plan for the project. Remaining approved units in this PAD will be utilized for that second lot portion of the project. The layout is basically the same, we have gone with slightly smaller buildings than the original master plan had called for, but again, a few more buildings than originally proposed, but we think it gives us a little more green space, a little less in terms of bulk of the proposed buildings. The type, the site will include a parking-to-unit ratio of approximately 1.7. Your master plan called for 1.5, so we're in compliance with that. In addition to the seven residential buildings, there will be a clubhouse sales office with a pool, a fitness center, a series of parking garages, a total of eight garages, which will each provide parking spaces for eight cars, and the remainder will be of open parking spaces in the loop parking driveway complex that goes around the site. We have included a, there's a maintenance building proposed, and we again have tried to isolate it. The refuge will be a central location, we have provided for an area to be dropped off, and there will be a central compactor there, so that it'll be one spot. We had looked at multiple places around the site, that just seemed to be a nightmare in the making in terms of trying to keep that up and keep it maintained. So this way, it'll be in one central spot. We have also provided a proposed dog-walking area down between the two water quality areas, bike storage in, we have shown for places for the outside, or inside storage for bikes for those that would be interested in that. So we've tried to provide amenities that would be suitable to what we feel will be the demographics of the project that we are proposing here. There's also a central feature in the courtyard area that will be, it's supposed to be a fire pit, which will be an area for congregation in the colder months of the year, and we feel that that's going to help provide some means of community activity for the complex during, during those times. I think we basically complied with all of the site development aspects. We've been through the, the master drainage plan that was proposed for the site, there were some discussions as to whether the basin as constructed was large enough or not large, not, and basically when we complete development, the stormwater quality will be adequate in accordance with the original master drainage study that was done. We are, there may have to be some modifications to the drainage easement from the original proposed, but again, that's something that we'll have to work out with your staff and I think probably with the selectmen's office when it gets to that point. But it's nothing that's going to impact the development, it's just a matter of how we outline that, that ultimate drainage easement for that water quality basin. The site has got city sewers, and we provided that to service all the buildings. And the one thing, other thing that was brought up at the previous meeting, and it's been a point of discussion, the transformer station that is just off to the, to the north of the, of the project, that's always been an issue for the development of this, as that's gotten bigger now, and you start to see how big it is, to be an influence on how this was going to be developed. And one of the things that we did do was to lower the site on this upper side in order to get the buildings down, so that there isn't, they're not looking straight out at it, they'll have some softening of their views off the back. And in our landscaping plan, which I'll show you in a second, we have also included some heavy landscaping on the top of this ridge, so that we added some protection, and also the, the transmission facility itself has a very aggressive landscaping plan. So, so that is, we feel is going to help ultimately for the proposed tenants of our site, but, you know, ultimately it will help soften up the whole area in terms of the impact of that transmission facility. I am not the architect, but I am just, I've got the architectural drawings here, and I'm just going to run through them, so the commission can get a sense of what the buildings are going to look like.
I have a question for you first.
Yep.
You mentioned in the bottom, right there, there's going to be a facility for trash? Is that, all the garbage in the whole facility are brought to this compacting place?
It's going to come to that one compactor. Whether there's going to be, there probably, or there may be services provided to the, to the tenants to pick it up, but those that don't want to pay for that. We try to make it so there's an area that they can come down, pull up, have an area they can stop, deposit their, you know, their waste in the compactor and recycling, whatever activities are going to take place. We've tried to provide a big enough area in a circular loop that they can come in and align, because I'm sure there's going to be certain mornings when the trash is going to come and they're going to all come on a Monday morning or whatever the, and there's probably going to be a certain amount of traffic associated with that in a particular time of the week.
How about runoff from that facility? What have you done for that?
What's that now?
Runoff, liquid runoff, when you have a big trash compactor, people throwing in?
Well, it's covered, number one, and, and it's going to be, it'll be contained in a concrete pit. So, so it isn't going to be directly running off and. This is a berm along here, so this is, this is down in a, in a controlled area.
There's a collection then of the, of the liquid runoff that comes from this compactor? There'll be a place to collect the liquid runoff?
Yes, there would be a place underneath it, so if there is a drain, it'll drain into, we haven't specifically designed that, but that's something that we, that we can look at and see what sort of treatment there would be for that. But our feeling is it's better to put it in one area than to have five or six of those scattered all over the site that are going to be, the whole thing is, you know, when we looked at it originally, if you put little fenced areas like you have in commercial sites, if you have 20 or 30 people going into those, they're just going to become a disaster, because nobody's going to close the gates, you're going to have somebody leaving stuff out. This way, it's one centralized area, it's right next to the maintenance facility, so it's going to be able to be watched and controlled, we have fencing around it, and very well, it may be that there's going to be hours set on it too, that it'll be closed for certain hours of the day, because I don't think you want people down there at 1:00 in the morning depositing their trash, you know. But it was the opinion, and, and again, some of the people that have been involved in other projects like this that are involved in this one, that was the first thing they said, put a central facility in, that's the only way that you can control it.
I just sort of want to go, I actually had some similar questions on that. 24 units in a building, right?
That's correct.
And there's no way to have a temporary place for waste below, or somewhere more centrally located to each unit, because it's too much burden to try to get that back into one place, and there's all the, I just can't imagine in my own household, maybe just because I have two boys, but I'm like, oh my God, you know, I go to the trash barrel like every day. So I was just wondering if there was any thought to being able to have that, I don't know, not in your house, because you can't bring it down the street, I don't know, there's nothing.
Well, I think, Bill, maybe you could, I didn't want to get off on a tangent of that, but I was just trying to explain it.
Well, you know, it is kind of one of those things you could think about.
Yes, Bill Finger, East Point, LLC, developer. It's a valid point. And my kids are out of the house, but we still have a lot of trash. There will be areas proximate to each of the buildings for what I'll call temporary areas for the trash to then either, if the residents don't choose to take their own trash to the dumpster area, to the compactor area, there'll be an ability to have one of our staff go around with a maintenance vehicle, whether it's a golf cart type of situation, pick it up from an individual building and bring it there. So it's not going to be sitting in the apartment, and it's not going to be a burden where somebody pees on the end of the trash and have to walk down from one end of the property to the other end.
That was my concern.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Is there, I have another question. Do you, do you have any recycling in this area as well? Is there any kind of way for folks to be able to separate out their trash down here at the central?
Central area?
Yeah.
We haven't, we have provided a large enough area that we can put a full-size roll-off dumpster plus a significant area for smaller dumpsters for recycling. I, and we, I really don't think anybody's studied, it's going to be when you get your, your company to come in and set up their facilities for it, but we provide enough room with the assumption that there's going to be a garbage collection and there's going to be a recycling area.
Right.
How many, I don't know.
If it's single-stream recycling, you shouldn't have an issue with that.
That's right.
And that is what we have in town, so, at least through a couple of different companies. So I would suggest that, you know, there needs to be that, yeah.
Yeah.
It's probably not where you are yet.
No, no, we aren't to that yet, but that's where we felt it was probably going to go, is, is single-stream, and then we have enough room there to provide some flexibility in how we manage that.
And I actually think you're right about having it in one location rather than multiple.
It's also designed in a way so that the garbage trucks can come in and easy back-in, pull out, and not to drive through the.
Well, it's less disruptive to the residents, too.
There were a number of recommendations by the town engineer and also by Hardeman and staff. I assume you're familiar with them and prepared to implement them?
Yes.
Are there any issues there?
No, no issues with any of the staff comments.
Okay.
And I know we had an informal presentation two weeks ago, because there was not making real progress on the design review board. What was the ultimate, their review got off on a tangent relative to building height and everything else, which had all really, already really been approved, but, so.
Did they look at it?
Initially, they did an informal presentation to the design review board.
No, I mean, but after, since you left us, did the design review?
I think it was the decision.
That was our recommendation, that they make their application and come in. The design of the buildings, we looked at last time.
Sure.
And in terms of the size, scope, coverage, all of those things is outlined in the staff memo, is fine. And again, the design review, in this particular case, didn't focus on the design characteristics of the buildings as much as starting from scratch, which we thought was kind of. of the buildings as much as starting from scratch, which we thought was kind of directed.
I'm going to go out on a limb and, and make the assumption that DRB might have an issue with the fact that all seven buildings are identical, with the same exact setbacks off the road. I, I'm just curious if there's been any further discussion on, on the form of the buildings, given that they're all exactly the same.
I'm not.
If, if you flip back to the other.
What do you mean by the same setbacks?
No, well, all the bill, all, the seven main buildings are identical. Was that correct?
That's exactly.
That's the way they were proposed.
And.
But there wasn't any discussion about that at DRB, design review?
Yes, there was, but they wanted more and smaller.
More buildings, smaller buildings.
They wanted more buildings, smaller, and, but, but there was, was kind of, they were two-sided. They, they said, okay, we want more buildings and smaller.
Yeah.
Or we want more open space. Well, if you do that, you create less open space because it, it makes it a more cluttered, if you're one big building, you can have lots of open space.
Okay.
So, you know, it was kind of counter.
So unfortunately, in this case, we really didn't get them to focus on the things that they, that they should have. And we took the process back two weeks ago to say that we want, asked them to make their application.
Understood.
All right. But I thought it was necessary to have that on the record that, that, that's exactly what we've done. Other questions relative to this? I guess this is a sort of a global question for you, Heiderman, because managing these large projects that, you know, go from a bare piece of ground to a finished product requires site plan amendments. And I know that in my tenure here, we've had things come in and things morph a little bit as you get on the site and design. And that, that will continue notwithstanding the PAD approval and our approval of the site plan here. Do you feel there's enough specificity in the site plan that we will approve for this stage of the project?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. And I would also say this too, that we certainly over time have learned and will be, town engineer, fire marshal, myself, will be careful to make sure that any changes that are proposed to what the commission approves are, are minor. If they're major or significant in any way, they would come back to you for it.
So again, in my tenure, we've had, I've had light pole issues and, you know, some of these other things. So.
Correct.
We rely heavily on, on staff and the engineers and everybody else to have looked at this and said, for this stage of approval, that the proper landscaping and, and design of the buildings and, and other things, such that we will approve tonight or not, or will consider it tonight or not, will, are outlines with enough specificity so that when they change, if, if you again, think, deem them to be significant, that they'll come back to us.
Yes, this will. And I think, and the items that I put in the memo too, I think that, that covers that. So that whether it's a change to drainage patterns, for example, or whether it's an engineering change or whatever, if those are accepted by the commission, I think we're in good shape there. I would just want one comment, yeah, again, probably isn't even thrilled about this, but they did check also that they had applied for a sign, and it's a minor thing right now. But we didn't have enough information on the sign application to make, to make that a recommendation. So what I would say is that I would be happy to work with the applicant going forward on the sign. And if they can give me the information that I need and a proper sign, just a sign permit, we can do that perhaps as a.
Something large, neon, maybe?
Yeah, we thought flash.
Out of the point.
Internally lit?
Large screen TV.
Internally lit?
Yeah.
And so we could perhaps do that as a consent item at a future event if you like.
That would be fine.
And these are all market rate apartment units?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I wasn't here before. So how many units, how many bedrooms in each or?
There are seven, twenty, seven 24-unit buildings.
Yeah.
There'll be a mix of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms.
Okay.
Will vary from building to building.
And market rate being, what is that now?
We're estimating the rents will be somewhere 1,300 to 1,900 dollars.
First, okay.
Studios, studio, the low end, two bedroom, some two bedrooms are the 1,900. Roughly those rents, obviously when we deliver, that could be a little bit different in those, in those numbers.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions while we have? All right.
The fire pit.
It's gas. It's, it's gas.
Okay. So my thought was, it's right in the middle of the whole complex. How do you control that? I know we have adults there, but you're going to have kids there. If it was part of the clubhouse maybe, where it's fenced in and controlled, if the sign was to use it, not, okay, well, I was here first and I'm hanging out and then people come over and want to use it and say, how do you control that?
Well, we have.
What's I've never seen in apartment complexes with a?
I mean. Fire pit. Real little.
The transit center.
As was pointed out, we have a clubhouse. We'll have our, our staff, our property manager here. And there's not going to be a free-for-all for the fire pit. I mean, there will have to be, you know, people say, we'd like to use it. It's not just an open wood sand. I mean, it's, it's containerized and there'll be a way of monitoring the use of it.
I'm sure the valve to turn on and off is going to be.
Be controlled, yes.
Could you show me again where this, this site lays in relation to the, the bigger picture site?
This is the master zone, as you called it. This is the piece right here. So you're coming in, this is, these are the buildings back here that we're presently in.
Yeah.
I think you have a permit for the, before you were, you already approved.
Right.
And that's a residential unit back there too?
For the.
Yeah.
Special.
That's right, yeah.
This is if you come in on Dorset Plaza Drive where there's a detention post in there. And the first curb cut, this cut.
It's a big open.
Field right now.
Field right now, yeah. There won't be any trees that have to be removed on this site, so.
I love the emergency room though, it's great. Been there a couple times.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I would propose that we discuss and take action on this tonight. Any discussion or?
I just want to say that it's nice to see that we're moving forward with these properties and as long as we're doing it with thought and good planning.
I'll, I'll make the comment that it looks a little cookie cutter to me, but I think it actually is probably, you know, in, in looking at why we created the PAD and why we're creating the zones that we are in town, the center zone, to create some depth and some difference and to make it fit into the community. These look like seven buildings that are all identical that, to me, doesn't necessarily fit the feel that I get when I go through either downtown Sinsbury or elsewhere, that we're, the feeling that we're trying to get out of this town. I think a little more thought could have gone into the, the depth and the, the size of the buildings personally.
Well then, that's what design review was saying.
Well, I don't think there was a very long discussion about, I, at DRB, but again, I don't, I don't have the minutes or know what the discussion was there, but I would have to agree with them.
So this is, this is the, you guys get to watch some of the sausage we made, but this, this is some, part of the issue of the PAD, which is that when Mr. Giorgio brought this in in the first place, he had five or six buildings and they all were identical. And, you know, that was the time to have those discussions. Now, they've gone from five to seven buildings. Scale is the same, coverage is different, but.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Just my comments.
I, I think it's a comment of, I would have liked a more appropriate interaction with the design review board as it related to those kind of features there. But part of why we put the PAD in place was to try to move these projects along.
Well, to give flexibility on both parts, I'd say.
Right, right. All right.
Okay.
So I'll be looking for a motion.
Yeah, I'll move approval.
All right, second.
I'll second.
All right, Amy seconds. Yeah.
And does that include the?
We will, we include all of the specifications as noted in the staff memo.
And the town engineers.
Yes, so those include, this approval is given subject to the final building development, site plans, meeting the requirements of the, and again, this is all written on the back of the staff memo, the comments in the town engineers memo, comments in the fire marshals memo. And again, you've all, the builders, you've seen these, the.
Even when they have the town engineers memo, fire marshals putting that together now.
Okay. Any requirements imposed by the building officials so as to ensure compliance with applicable building code? You, you should be in compliance with the applicable building code, I would think, I'd recommend that. Any requirements of the inland wetlands, wetlands agency conservation commission? So what's the status of that?
That's done and been approved, Mr. Chairman. Any changes to the plan, go back to them.
Okay, so to my earlier comment, all right. Compliance with all WPCA requirements. What's a WPCA?
Water pollution control.
Final map to show correct delineation of stormwater basin and then the requirements to submit the appropriate milars and the like. All right? All right, so it's been moved and seconded? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Next agenda item is discussion on the proposed policy for Route 10 light post banners.
Yeah, Heiderman, my question before we even start talking about this, is this is a courtesy to us or do we actually have to approve this?
The selectmen have asked that the, all the land use commissions comment on this. If you choose to do it this evening, that's fine. If you choose to put it off, I'm not sure that there's been no deadline, specific deadline made known to me. But let me give you just a little quick background on, on the issue. As you know, we have the, the main banner over Hop Meadow, which flies quite often. It's a lot of work, believe it or not, for staff to coordinate these things. People come in almost a year in advance to get these things. And when that dates conflict or someone who has a particularly, particularly passionate about their organization and they can't get the dates they want, it, it just, it causes a significant amount of back and forth, let me tell you. So we then had the new banner put over Iron Horse just a while ago to try to alleviate some of that pressure so that folks could get that one. That does do some of that, but it also creates, that's administered by the, by Jerry Tonner and the, and the Parks and Rec.
Backboard.
Then the third little part of this too is that you see the, the small banners on the light posts. And typically when the symphony shows up in the summertime, those go up and, but unfortunately, as I said earlier this evening to somebody, no good deed goes unpunished. And so what happens sometimes is that people come in with requests about, well, we think, we think our banners would go there and they would be fine and they comply with all these requirements. And what's happened is DOT actually controls this process significantly. And so there are a series of questions that the, the selectmen would like to have answered or at least discussed anyway. Should the banners, for example, be displayed all 12 months? Or do they become to the point where you just sort of ignore them when they're there all the time? You just sort of don't notice them anymore? Do they lose their effectiveness? This from Parks and Rec, should the staff charge organizations for staff time for putting them up and taking them down? That's primarily, has to do with whether the banners should include advertising or not. Some organizations, certainly for the symphony, you know, sponsor some of the banners and there's a small, I think there's about a four-inch band along the bottom that says, you know, and should that, should that be there or not be there? Again, we're, we're going to at some point in time have to try to get with DOT and say, this is acceptable to us, do you find it acceptable? Because they may say yes or no. But we're trying to wrestle with a number of different entities here and trying to balance all those. So the banners and should they include advertising is a question.
But that's only with regard to Route 10?
Correct. You know, and the Iron Horse actually is more of a town decision, DOT doesn't play in that so much. And that, the Performing Arts Center, I'm sure is a, a group has had many discussions about that. I'm sure that the, the folks that, that try to coordinate all that find that challenging as well from time to time. I don't know the answer to that, but that's certainly a question that they can answer townwide anyway. Should the light pole banners and Iron Horse be reserved for summer concert series only or for the Performing Arts Center events only? And while sometimes we think of them sort of as going together and not being in conflict with each other, apparently there, there are some events which conflict with others. And who should administer the banner permit process? That was probably asked by the Parks and Rec department, but I have a really good answer for that one, I won't share with you this evening, but the banner permit process is very time consuming. We have one of our staff members who has since now gone, and not because of this, but used to spend a significant amount of time coordinating not only the public gathering permits, but the banners for across Hop Meadow as well as these. It just is a very time, there's, because there's, there's insurance involved, you know, if the banner falls on someone's car, you know, or the wire comes down across Route 10, who pays for it? So there's liability insurance. And then the, the sort of bottom line is, should the banner requests be limited to town events? You may remember a while ago, we had, I think EB had a, had a, you know, a birthday, 125th birthday, you know, Westminster had something, you know, Chamber might want something, you know. Are there only town-sponsored events that these things should be showing or there should be other things?
You're talking about the ones on the top?
The big ones?
The big ones or the?
Little ones that go off the light posts, both sides.
Yeah, the little ones.
Primarily questions for the Route 10 light pole banners primarily.
Oh, sorry.
The big banners are a little easier to control, they still require a significant amount of, of time and administration. We have a book in there, as I say, we're already into 2014.
So can you remind me, who's doing it now? Who's?
It's, it's.
Parks, Parks and Rec puts them up and takes them down.
Okay.
Just on Iron Horse.
Well, no, I think on the town as well, yeah. And so the question is, you know, who should be doing that? And do we have any opinions about that? And these, just having this preliminary discussion is helpful for me to see, you know, what some of the questions you might have. And I don't know that we need to resolve this tonight, but certainly maybe by the next time we meet, which is in the November meeting, I think 18th or something, maybe we could have recommendations.
I have, I have a comment. I'm on Iron Horse quite a bit. And the pole that comes out of the bottom of the banner, if you're riding a bike, you could hit your head on it. And I'm wondering if it's supposed to be that low? Because I'm actually, if I run, I could put my hand up and there's no banner on it, it's a pole that just sticks out. And I've actually, I've said to myself, that is really kind of hazardous, because you don't see it because there's no banner on it.
Sure.
So I'm just wondering.
Does it come out over the sidewalk?
It does. It comes out and, and it's, it's potentially, I would say, a liability. And if there's any way that we could move it up a little bit, if there's a banner on it, it's not quite as hazardous because you see the banner. But I swear, if it's just the pole, it's very dangerous. So I would just sort of want to throw it out there as an FYI, we might want to look at that when we're telling, when we're dealing with this.
And especially if someone's, you know, maybe a 6'4" or 6'6" person.
A tall person, I'm telling you, I'm not that tall and I could hit it.
Either that or have just some generic banner up there at all times.
I just think you move the pole up so it's not quite as low. I don't know.
If it's not a fixture on the pole, then that might be.
Yeah, either way. But, so I don't have the answers for the other thing, but I just wanted to mention that.
Well, if you do, in the meantime, if you could email me or say what you think, if you, if you know of any particular issues, and we'll filter all that back to Parks and Rec and to the first selectman's office for their, their decision.
I thought the recommendations actually are pretty good.
Yeah.
The 250 is appropriate. I mean, that'll separate who really wants one or not.
Well, that's for sure.
That's good. But that's, if that's what it costs to put them up, that's what it should be.
I know.
I'm not offended by the advertising or the, you know, the, where you see it is the local companies that have sponsored the event get selectively.
I'm not offended by that either. Frankly, I think.
I think it's nice. I think it's a nice thing, actually.
Yeah.
So I think to the extent, the extent that we can get DOT to agree with that, that So I think to the extent, the extent that we can get DOT to agree with that, that seems like it's a reasonable request, then.
Why, I'm sorry, why is DOT opposed to that?
Advertising, private advertising in the state right of way has a policy.
I see.
And that's basically what they hang their hat on.
I see.
And they don't distinguish, we're talking more about sponsorship, like recognizing a sponsor. We're not putting something up that says, buy something at, you know, Vincent Sporting Goods.
Didn't have the 800 number or the website, they wouldn't care, right? They wouldn't consider advertising.
Yeah, I kind of think there's a difference between that sponsorship and advertising.
Right. It isn't really...
It's a fine line. It's a very fine line.
And that's it. And that's why we had to say, you know, should these be for town-sponsored events only? And then if there's an advertising, uh, space below that, I think that's probably what people are thinking is acceptable. Whereas if it said, you know, shop at, you know, Bill's Auto Place, whatever.
So you want to avoid is if there's, let's say there's 20 of them, you know, each one's got a different, you feel like it's a billboard central.
You're like, you're like at the Little League Park.
Right.
But you know, they don't have any advertising on PBS, right?
Right.
This is brought to you by...
Right.
Right. So normally, okay, so in the past, you've had the bikes, for example, the bike thing.
Yeah.
And that was a series of like four different images. Are we talking about the same type of thing or, because we're not talking about anybody who wants to put up one banner could then put up one banner that was completely different from the other 12?
That's correct. These are, these are 19 designated brackets on those poles, I mean.
Okay.
But just, just as a minor departure from that, just to give you something to think about, the North Village, Simsbury North Village group that's, that's sort of forming in the north, Rick Wagner and Stephen Tony, so they're talking about, you know, they would like to see these banners and light poles in the north end as well.
Oh, I see.
So that hasn't been fully fleshed out yet, but just to let you know that this is a potential thing where we make a decision in the center, we're going to have to kind of stick with it, you know, going forward.
We talk...
You just don't want it all over the place.
Could be, could well be. And I think we need to be, obviously fairness is important, but we need to, whatever decision we need to make, frankly, somebody said to me, we should just take them all down. You know, the two banners over the highway, that's it. So that's something to think about as well.
If, if the alternative is that we're going to have them, have them in every part of Simsbury, let's just take them down.
That's, that's a question that I'd just like you to think about.
I'm, I'm wondering if you can't designate it for the center town only within, like, the Iron Horse realm, from one end to the other? I don't know if you can do this. And then the only other thing is, oh geez, what was I thinking? Oh, I think I would, I think you were hitting on something when you talked about only certain times of the year. Because I do think you'll get fatigue on the effectiveness of these things, and I think they go up and it seems like spring. It's kind of like when you put the flags up for Memorial Day.
For holidays, yeah.
They're not always there. And when they go up, it's nice. But when they get down, it's nice, too.
Yeah.
So I think you're right about that from a, from a real sort of, you know, logical sort of normal, this is how we take things in.
And I, I agree with, you know, what Juan said, you know, it's just tough to explain to a business person.
Yeah, I know.
Well, the center is the center, but your north end and we tag in the south end really don't qualify. It's, it's tough to explain that to folks. So the rationale needs to be clear, whatever it turns out to be, and we need to be able to sort of defend that, so.
What about putting it in with the, where the center code exists?
I, I like that idea.
You know, I could be, you know, I have no problem with that. I just want to be clear that everybody's happy with it, just going forward, just...
Well, not everybody will be happy.
That can never happen.
Fifty-one percent is...
To find everybody. Yeah, so just go all the way back, I wasn't really sure how this got to be a zoning question, but it's, just looking for general consensus from everybody?
Yeah, exactly. The land use commissions have all been asked to weigh in. I'm not sure whether folks are just looking straight out what the decision gets made, I'm not sure.
So, so what, how do you then, you want our feedback?
If you come up with something, you think of something, the next day or two, let me know. I'll probably ask the same question at the next meeting. And anybody that hasn't responded, please feel free to do that by then.
Is there a, a time span that they're allowed up per decision? In other words, if, you know, it's 150 years at EB, how long do they get to do it? Does everybody, is it based on what you pay or is it a week or is it two weeks?
Recommendation is at a maximum period, display period of 12 weeks. I think typically in the summer, it's been through the symphony season. That's typically what it was. It would just be can that way.
12 weeks is a lifetime.